I will call to order this meeting of the Oak Park Public Library on April 22. Will the secretary please take the roll?
Trustee Bloom?
Here.
Trustee Chaka Wark?
Here.
Trustee Fairfax is here, trustee boss.
Here.
Trustee Gungulie?
Here.
Trustee Rogers?
Here.
And trustee fruit.
Here. Next item is the approval of minutes. We have two minutes, sets of minutes. One from our March 18 regular meeting and one from our March 27 regular meeting. Is there a mo- does anyone have any changes to any clarification they need to be made to either sets of minutes? Hearing done. Is there a motion to approve both sets of minutes?
Served.
Moved by Maya. Is there a second? Seconded by Ted. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor of approving the minutes say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? Those minutes are approved. We will move on to public comments. I did not receive any public comments via email or our web form in advance of this meeting. Do any of our guests wish to make a public comment at this time?
Actually Matt, I had a, we didn't, I had one, but she's actually here if she wants to make public comment.
Would you like to make public comment?
So, um, tonight, I want to express my sincere gratitude to the dedicated board members who tirelessly, tirelessly service the Oak Park Public Library and its patrons. There's no glamour in these roles and the time and energy dedicated to improving our community often goes unacknowledged. While you all deserve recognition, I especially want to thank my husband Matt. And a world warrior of loan tenures, Matt's 20 years as a trustee, starting at just 25 years old, represent extraordinary dedication. How many 20-somethings did you know that would have opted to spend their free time doing this? Matt and I have been together for a long time, but his longest relationship has been this one. That's at least 240 meetings and countless hours spent serving our library and community. Meetings would result in him missing bedtime with our daughters. I used to tell them that he was at the library checking to make sure the books were okay. They also may have thought they were official princesses of the library at one point. I've witnessed his late nights wrestling with decisions, always striving to do what's right. I often wondered why anyone would volunteer for the stress and scrutiny that public office in Oak Park holds. To know Matt is to understand that his passion for public service is an essential part of who he is. I wish all board members, both old and new, the best of luck in the coming years. I'm sure they will continue to do great things, but I can't imagine the Oak Park Library will ever have a trustee who cares as much as he did. To all board members, thank you, and especially thank you, Matt, for your remarkable service.
Thank you. Are there any other, um?
I'm Steve Fruit. I served on this board for two terms during the time that we planned and built this out of this. My son followed me, and I will say that he was a far, far better trustee than I ever was. I am solemnly proud of his dedication to service to the library and to the community.
Thank you. If there are no other public comments, we will move on to trustee comments and board calendar. The next board meeting will be May 27th, which will include, the, begin with a swearing in of the new trustees, followed immediately by the nominating committee, which will then immediately be followed by the regular board meeting of that. Then we have the Lakoni trustee banquet and the day in our village, Sunday, June 1st. For anyone who wants to attend the Lakoni trustee banquet, please make sure to contact staff so they can be, you can be registered for that.
Do we know what's happening here 4th of July yet?
Um, at this point, we are not planning on participating.
Okay.
If you would like to, then we can have like a discussion with Ellsworth.
Okay.
Um, but.
I didn't know they were planning a parade or like.
For the 4th of July?
Yeah.
There is a parade. Um, there is not a lot of staff interest.
Okay.
But usually the Friends March.
So, we'll also march with the Friends and that could be an option.
Okay.
Any other trustee comments?
Go ahead.
No, no, you go, you go first.
Okay, um, just because I, I would like to see Matt cry a little bit more. Um, I will say that I have known a new, knew both Matt, Madarima, and Ted prior to joining. So I guess it's fitting that we are all leaving together. And I want to note that in the near decade that I have known Matt, I have been blown away by the pride that he shared in everything that this library did and in its staff. And I specifically remember a resolution that he very proudly drafted and sent to me after the, the board meeting where he noted his undying support for each and every member of the library's staff. And my response was to point out five typos. And note that he should have, that he messed up on a few grammar issues that I asked if he could fix prior to the resolution. And while some would take that very specific attention to detail as being one of the more annoying habits that a person could have, and someone who was not supportive, Matt did just the opposite, which is he would ask me to, review things when appropriate and consider running for a seat on the board. A few times of which my health kept me from, one time and which I did, I did end up running. And I will thank Matt for always being willing to take that criticism. And I would also like to thank all the members of this board for dealing with that, you know, retentive nature. And. And for the, the time we've spent together and just all of your dedication. And also the incredible staff and their undying dedication to this life. I want a tear.
So should I just, should I just go or do we all want to cry somewhere over my?
So actually I found myself getting more emotional than I'd expected over this last meeting, so I'm going to try and keep it short. I mean, that's a big joke, but you know, we can just say relatively. It has sincerely been one of my life's greatest pleasures to have been elected onto and served on the library board. During this moment in history, when it seems that the direct attacks on library practices and funding is only matched by the attacks on values that public libraries hold as core to their mission, it warrants saying loudly and clearly how much I love libraries and how much I love this library in particular. Thank you to all members of the library staff for giving me the opportunity to, to learn and work, to learn of all the work that you all do. Thank you all, obviously, to all of you, my colleagues on the board, for always leading with your principles. It has been educational and inspiring and even fun, maybe, you know, last year, I don't think it's nothing. I especially, you know how much I love and respect all of you, I hope. I especially want to thank Matt. I don't know how many people would, I don't know many people who would be as gracious and open with their time and knowledge as you have been. And I definitely don't know anyone who would do a job for 20 years and still treat newbies like they had opinions and perspectives of equal value. I did not earn that. I did not deserve it, but I'm so glad that you pretended you didn't notice. So good luck to new and continuing trustees. I am not hopeful about much, but this library I am optimistic about.
With that, we'll move on to our interim co-directors' reports.
We don't have much. You can jump into the strategic priorities, okay? So in your packet, you'll find our reports starting on page eight. I want to highlight a few things. So in April, we had a wonderful environmental and sustainability program. Native gardening for, native gardening for the neighborhood, design, planting, and maintenance. This was a hybrid program created and coordinated by our environmental and sustainability specialist, Christina, Christine, in partnership with the representatives from the village and Wild Cook, West Cook Wild Ones. Even with snow on the ground, there was a huge interest in this event with more than 200 people in attendance. About half in virtual and half, you know, in person. And so it was really wonderful to do that. Moving down into the learning section, in 2020, to stay connected with patrons while the buildings were closed, our creative services team launched a newsletter called Tech Tips. It's a monthly email and web series providing simple, approachable digital guidance. I'm really happy that this has continued on and it has been very impactful, you know, providing, it reaches almost 2,000 subscribers and has an over half of 53% open rate. And so that's really great. People are getting some, some knowledge and what a wonderful thing to start during our time in COVID. And then in Stewarch, I do want to point out our wonderful facilities team. They've made a lot of critical repairs to the main library's snowlot system, which is the system that is in the front of the building and on the sides that melts the snow. There's a lot of, you know, information about that. They also made some repairs to the fire alarm system and have piloted some sustainability-focused projects and, you know, replaced the new trash cans. And so some of their work does get unnoticed, but it's really valuable and important work. And then lastly, in the anti-racism equity section, I'm really proud of my team. The public services managers met to discuss the implementation of these red cards. They're at all of the service desks. They're in Spanish and English. And you can, it provides a script for somebody who may be encountering an ICE agent. These, there's some more information in the packet about it, but if anybody wanted to see, I have some examples of those. And those have been taken and have been given out at their public services desks.
Thank you.
That's amazing.
Thank you so much.
Okay, um, highlighted under learning, collection management librarian Jenna Frevo recently completed a two-year term as chair of the children's literature lecture committee for the Association for Library Service to Children House. Jenna's term culminated in an author lecture featuring Kyle Lukov hosted at the Noma County Library on March 20th. I do want to highlight IT specialist David Zuba, who should be out there. He is an essential part of the IT team, bringing strong technical skills and a proactive, solutions-oriented approach to every task. Whether providing support for important board meetings or fine tuning the audio system in the veterans' room to enhance sound quality for hybrid programs, David's hands-on support makes a real difference in ensuring things run smoothly behind the scenes so that everyone in our community can enjoy the many opportunities for learning and connection that the library has to offer. He is amazing. And then in the anti-racism section, the special collections team has continued to move forward with processing this Dan West collection and updating our digital preservation plan. Special collections collaborated with members of the IT team and a digital preservation expert to determine the best server for these digitizations. And the IT team then partitioned part of the server for these files. The team is now exploring options for portals to make these digitizations accessible to the community in the future.
I would just like to say, David is amazing. He has been so patient with us board members. For our various late nights and always seems to have a smile even at the end of the night.
Yes.
And I, it is really appreciated. So I, I just, he is, yeah, it's, I'm glad, I'm glad he's here. Any questions? When we can look at the core statistics?
So this is, you know, we are doing quarterly statistics again. So this is the first quarter. So you haven't seen them in a couple months prior. So this is Q1. And just kind of giving you guys some context, as always, if you scroll to the far right side, you can see the pluses and minuses where things have increased. And that's a year, it's a comparison of quarter one last year to quarter one this year. That change, year-over-year change, so.
I, I saw, there was a, I had news this week that Chicago Public Library is changing their e-card structure. I'm not surprised, given that, you know, various things are changing, the price, the price impacts. But also I know that there are people who have signed up for these e-cards in multiple public libraries, even when they, their own public library has not been restrictive. You know, someone from Kansas City getting more like New York, Chicago, San Francisco, because they want to, they don't want to wait for an ebook or an audiobook, and that puts a load on those other things. So I think that might be something we see in more libraries start to, you know, start to make that change. But I would just, I, this is not to say I encourage us making that shift. I know we do have sort of a, our digital does have a time, already had a time limit on it, I believe. Like you had to convert it to a full part.
You have to come into the building physically to get that.
Within, within at some point, yeah. So, but I, that's just one of those things.
Any like considerations for the building visits and why that might have, that feels significant, but I know like things just are dependent on events.
Well, I saw also like it, it seems to trend along with the, the wifi use. So I'm wondering if that was why that chunk of folks were coming in to begin with.
Interesting. It does, the percentage does, doesn't lie. It's seven and eight percent.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah.
Maybe that.
Are the number?
I mean, the.
I'm just not that good at math.
Well, they have, they have the, the percentage change.
The number isn't quite the same.
Yeah, but it's close.
Yeah, the total number is.
I mean.
Yeah.
I guess it's me following my kids to use the, when I cut it off at home.
There you go. Well, it might be, that might, there definitely could be, there could be related, but definitely, who knows? I don't think the other ones particularly.
There's only three metrics are more than 5% below what we saw in Q1 last year, and it was building visits, wifi use, and new user accounts. So, yeah, definitely. I mean, it's, it's less than 10% of a change, but how data specialist, does it, anything that's more than 5% will get a red.
Yeah.
And a treatment.
Right, whereas.
Kind of call attention to it in case it's something we want to keep our eyes on and keep track of. I mean, I don't, I don't have anything off the top of my head that would indicate. No, last year we were dealing with a lot of the program, programming numbers spiking and then going down. That was actually, it feels like a lifetime ago, but that was the, the, whoops. And so that was something that was explainable.
Yeah, this, I, you know, I'm not sure what would be.
If there's anything specific.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, when, is it automated? Like, I was like, kind of, it's a little late, but it's the first time people have.
There's a ticker.
There's a ticker.
Yeah, at the front doors.
Cool.
And then we would expect that new cards are probably going to tick up over summer, because we usually get a boosted day in our village. And then when school starts again.
Yeah.
Did, was Dole closed for anything? I have a feeling that the park district had a building closed for.
That was the squaring, yeah. They were doing renovations for a week or something.
I don't know that that would come from all of this, but it might.
Yeah.
But it's just, yeah.
Who knows? Just, you know, about a 5%.
Okay. We have our staff reports as well. And. If there's no questions out there, we'll move into our financial reports.
Oh, I was going to ask a quick question.
Yeah.
Summer hires, when are we?
Oh, what happened?
Okay, so we're probably going to see those ne- next month then.
Next month, we are doing something a little different with some of our departments. We are hiring a number of assistants, but in at least our children's department, we thought we would throw it out to, put it out to some of the existing staff if they wanted additional hours. If they were in another department and were looking to maybe try their hand at what it was like dealing with kids, we were going to offer that map first.
Oh.
And we were able to fill three positions that way with our existing staff, just taking on some additional hours. But I do know we are hiring a book like assistant, and then for the summer, two of those, and then interns.
Wait, you couldn't, you couldn't find anyone who wanted to ride that bike all summer?
They had a book like.
Go to Kelly Block.
Over bridges.
I'm tired. Just thinking about that.
Okay, going into our financial reports, we have our first quarter. Starting on page 17, 16, I'm sorry. Any, any questions?
I'm still wondering about the parking lot. I was like, where are we getting that? Who was, who was hanging out here? I don't know. I, I know we talked about it before, but like, do we have a way of figuring out who's stink? Because this is far over what we had kind of budgeted and.
So one of the things that Billy had talked to us, our director of finance, was that we kind of just guesstimate what were going to be.
Okay.
Right, that what he said? Um, it was, they weren't sure, it wasn't a metric that we were tracking, and so they just kind of put a number in there.
Okay.
And so next year going forward, it will probably be a closer, it won't be such a wild, you know.
And I know Billy's usually really conservative about those numbers, and I think it broke for a while last year, so we just.
And it definitely was having some issues and so, um.
Yeah, they had, they had to buy new server and, and other, and new.
Yeah, they have a technology which is quite a bad.
Okay.
Um, we've been kind of watching some of the, you know, people who use the, the bug, the aircon to say, yeah, that's going to take it a lot. And we're kind of trying to focus more on that as well.
Okay.
Um, but it is heavily used. Also, when you try to survive, yeah, it's busy.
Especially in the wintertime, though, it'll probably be, you know, I think we definitely probably see that of people who want to, you know, spare the, having to clean out their car. Okay, then we will, if there's no other questions, we can move into.
The subscriptions are 24% per year to date budget due to the timing of renewals and the release of prepaid expenditures. I'm just wondering if there can be, that can be explained a little more. I'm just not sure I follow what.
Still, for the subscription line, usually that, we pay that at the beginning of the year. And so that is why you see that kind of tick up. We do watch that line throughout the year to make sure we're kind of keeping level. But that is why you see like January, February, and March, that bumps up quite a bit.
Okay. Um, yeah, because I just was noticing, and I know that that's been an issue that we've been concerned about a lot more is, you know, kind of keeping track of subscription costs.
Um, and Rapha, who's manager of IT, he's really been keeping track of kind of what subscriptions we have. Do we need them? So we're constantly checking on that to make sure that if it says a subscription we don't need, we can get rid of it.
How do we determine if we don't need something just based off usage?
Based off usage.
Okay.
Or sometimes the department is using something and they're like, we don't need this anymore. We have to try to.
Turning internal tools and stuff.
Okay.
That makes a lot of sense. I've struck out trying to get software at the county because there's not a, enough, would not be enough use for it, for the big license fees that we would have to pay for that. So I, I understand that. It's frustrating as a user, but again, all right, then.
And then another question about the Friends showing 50% of the budget year-to-date. Remind me the, when we anticipate receiving receipts from the July 11th to 13th book fair? Like, how does the, how does that, when did we get paid for last year and?
That's a great question. So our fiscal, our fiscal year and calendar, or not, calendar fiscal year, is what I would say. And when I started, the Friends were giving that money in mid-July and then having us spend through the following year. And it was really confusing for staff to keep track of and for, because in December, you're trying to close out the budget, but you still have this like pocket of Friends money. And so we worked really hard this year to get that on about our schedule. So we've already gotten the Friends money this year. We got it in January. I may have to go back and get the exact amount, but we were able to, they had enough in their cockpores to cover it, and then whatever they make in July, we'll likely ask for that in December and they'll give it to us in January. So we're trying to get it aligned with our own fiscal year. Just because it's cleaner. And then it's 2024, 25, you know.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yes, it's a good question.
That's very cool. Then we will move into our resolution on disbursements, 7B, which begins on page 29. Are there any questions? That goes through page 50. If there are no questions, is there a motion to approve the resolution on disbursements?
Served. I'm not even going to tell you all.
Moved by Madarima. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Maya. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Any abstentions? Then it's approved. Moving on to additional reports. I go.
We did not meet. Do you know the next meeting is?
Well, no.
That's an excellent question.
It was, it was canceled the day of and then potentially rescheduled and never got rescheduled. So I think at this point, we're just waiting to hear more, but I kind of assume that's going to be when Severn gets new seats. I don't think we're going to have a meeting before then.
June 12. Yeah. Yeah, I probably.
Thank you. Cog has not met since the last month. I'll make sure, I'll make sure that the Phil President's office knows to connect with the Ellsworth and whoever the next board president is, so they can be on a schedule. Board presidents or their designated attends that. Meeting, Planet Green?
Planet Green, a very interesting event has happened. We in past years have sent student representatives to the International Climate Conference, and we've decided not to do it this year because it is in a crime-ridden part of the grizzly rainforest.
That would, that would, that would be, they don't have enough hotel rooms.
Okay. That's all you would have had to say to me. Yeah.
There you go.
Friends.
Friends met last in March, and I believe I recorded in March on the.
And the next meeting is May 19th, so Jody will be taking over for me as the staff lady is on. They won't be affordably unknown. I mean, you're still technically, you can go. Sorry. If you want.
With that, we'll move into.
Do we need to like an interim to show up? Do we need a like an interim to show up from the board?
Okay, they can, the next one will be in June.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, unfinished business, we have nothing listed here. Uh the staff survey results are complete, you know, the Virginia and Suzanne and Christina, Bill, I uh make I'll make sure that you you're connected with um Tom at um Polistic uh for that, um so that those can be shared and reviewed. Um, then new business, we have a set of resolutions. I'm gonna ask our vice president to handle reading those.
Oh, my goodness. Resolution to honor the service of Matthew Pruth as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Oak Park Public Library. Whereas Matt Pruth faithfully served as a trustee for twenty years from two thousand and five through two thousand and twenty-five, developing and sharing invaluable institutional knowledge and ensuring increased access, evolving and expanding resources and dependable library services for all patrons. Whereas Matt Pruth has shown his utmost devotion to and pride in the Oak Park Public Library, which is evident through more ways and acts than can be adequately articulated. Whereas Matt Pruth dutifully served in various office uh various years in the capacities of Library Board President, Secretary and Finance Officer. Whereas Matt Pruth supported the library's executive director's decisions and direction during the COVID nineteen pandemic, specifically by supporting continued compensation of staff input as well as mental health resources for all library staff members managing the complexities of a stressful and ever-changing environment. Whereas Matt Pruth voted to approve several public pol- public library policy firsts, changing the way the library interacts with its community, including the elimination of fines for overdue book carbon items, the ev- evolution of rules of behavior for the library for everyone policy and approval of the library's first anti-racism strategic plan. Whereas Matt Pruth has enthusiastically represented the library at various community events, including a day in our village, key author events, library anniversary celebrations and library staff learning and engagement days. And whereas Matt Pruth has authorized several board resolutions, statements that have consistently supported library staff members, library collections, programs and exhibits, as well as the freedom to read and the continuation of federal funding for all libraries. Whereas Matt Pruth has served on the council of governments for Oak Park. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Library Trustees of the Village of Oak Park expresses its deepest appreciation to Matt Pruth for his years of dedicated service to the Oak Park Public Library. Adopted this twenty-second day of April, two thousand and five by unanimous vote of the Oak Park Public Library Board of Oak Park Public Library Trustees of the Village of Oak Park.
Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Here, is there hearing no objection? It is approved.
Resolution to honor the service of Theodore Foss as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Oak Park Public Library. Theodore Ted Foss faithfully served the library as a trustee for ten years from two thousand and fifteen through two thousand and twenty-five, ensuring increased access, evolving and expanding resources and dependable library services for all patrons. Ted Foss dutifully served in various years in the capacity of the Library Board Vice President. Ted Foss embraced a leading role to build a one-of-its-kind relationship with the National Library of Cuba when he visited Cuba with an American Library Association de- delegation to explore a sister library relationship and share photos and stories after the trip with the Oak Park Library staff members and our patrons and community, highlighting the many connections past and present between Oak Park and Cuba. Whereas Ted Foss for nearly ten consecutive ten consecutive years gifted hundreds of varieties of organic heirloom tomato plant to library staff members, young plant-loving, home-crown crop seeds that have been carefully hand-planted and labeled in little hydroponic pods. Ted, whereas Ted Foss is committed to Oak Park and the library's sustainability efforts, served as library boards representative to green community connections and donated personal funds to support the rooftop honeybee hive with a fun and educational livestream bee cam featured on YouTube. Where Ted Foss supported the library's executive director decisions during um direction during the COVID nineteen pandemic, specifically by supporting continued compensation for staff input as well as mental health resources for all library staff members managing the complexities of a stressful and ever-changing environment. Whereas Ted Foss willingly made time to be trained on the practice of the hardwood method, community engagement to better understand and support library initiatives as well as use for himself the time-tested tools for listening and understanding what residents shared what residents shared aspirations were and how the library played a role in supporting progress towards reaching those shared goals. Whereas Ted Foss voted to approve several public library policy firsts, changing the way the library interacts with the community, including the elimination of fines for overdue Oak Park items, the evaluation of the rules of behavior for library for everyone policy and approved the library's first anti-racism strategic plan. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of the Library Trustees of the Oak Park Public of the Village of Oak Park express its deepest appreciation to Ted Foss for his years of dedicated service to the Oak Park Public Library. Adopted this twenty-second day of April, two thousand and twenty-five by unanimous vote of the Board uh of Library Trustees of the Village of Oak Park.
Is there any objection to uni- to unanimous consent? Hearing none?
Resolution to honor the service of Maya Ganguly as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Oak Park Public Library. Whereas Maya Ganguly faithfully served as a library trustee for two years from two thousand and twenty-three through two thousand and twenty-five, ensured increased access evolving and expanding resources and dependable library services for all patrons. Whereas Maya Ganguly dutifully served at the Oak Park Public Library as representative for the friends of the Oak Park Public Library meetings. Whereas Maya Ganguly has distinguished herself in the service through her determination to improve the service services and programs of the Oak Park Public Library and the lives of the people in the community she was elected to serve. Now therefore be it resolved that the Oak Park Public Library Trustees expressed its deepest appreciation to Maya Ganguly for her years of dedicated service to the Oak Park Public Library. Adopted this twenty-second day of April, two thousand and twenty-five by unanimous vote of the Board of Library Trustees of the Village of Oak Park.
This proposed free unanimous consent, is there any objection? Hearing none, is adopted.
Resolution to honor the service of Madhuriya Chakrabarti as a member of the Board of Trustees of the Oak Park Public Library. Whereas Madhuriya Chakrabarti faithfully served as library trustee for four years from two thousand and twenty-one through two thousand and twenty-five, ensuring increased access, evolving and expanding resources and depending dependable library services for all patrons. Whereas Madhuriya Chakrabarti has dutifully served in various years in the capacity of the library finance officer. Whereas Madhuriya Chakrabarti has distinguished herself in the service through her determination to improve the services and programs of the Oak Park Public Library and the lives of the people in the community she was elected to serve. Now therefore be it resolved that the public that the Board of Library Trustees of the Village of Oak Park expresses its deepest appreciation to Madhuriya Chakrabarti for her years of dedicated service to the Oak Park Public Library. Adopted this twenty-second day of April, two thousand and twenty-five by unanimous vote of the Board of Library Trustees of the Village of Oak Park.
Being presented for unanimous consent, is there any objection? Hearing none, is adopted. Thank you. Well, those will, after the meeting, we'll sign the the proper documentation for those. Um, next up is the appointment of the board nominating committee. Board president, I will not, uh I name Christina Rogers, who will also serve as the committee chair, Suzanne Fairfax and Annie Wilkinson to serve on the nominee committee. This committee, as previously mentioned, will meet immediately following the uh swearing-in of board members at the May twenty-seventh board meeting. And that committee meeting will precede the main meeting uh for that month.
Do we have something in place if that amount of time is not sufficient?
Um, the the committee can adjourn and reassess to a later date if they feel the need to.
Okay.
Um, the next item is onboarding of incoming trustees.
Wait, it says action. Do we need to
Uh, my, no, my my uh my statement is the is the action for the board president.
Okay.
The onboarding of incoming trustees, um Suzie, I believe you and have shared with Ellsworth, um who was our will be our incoming director. I'd say the director, um some inform, you know, some um suggestions uh for consultants to do some uh board orientation and training. Uh, I will work with uh, you know, sharing the information I have from of course, you guys have all my emails. Um, but uh for that and the board will review that for options in the new after the main meeting. Uh, Virginia, Christine, Christine or Suzanne have anything thoughts to share at this time or?
This is looking at org training, this would be something that we would do collectively with the new board members probably. If Ellsworth wants to come along on that ride with us, then, okay.
All right. But um I am postponing my trustee comments until the end today. The president's privilege. I was thinking of this and you know, imagine Golden Girls, picture it, Oak Park, two thousand and five. I had a lot less gray hair and sported an ill-advised goatee, uh thanks to my wife for shaking me of that. When I was first elected, uh I thought that the library board was done with controversial decisions for a while. This building had just recently been completed, the various author quotes had been chosen and for the most part, our responses to the Patriot Act were largely established. Wrong enough. Um, I could go on for quite a while on all the various challenges from the adoption of ebooks and streaming to disastrous recessions to online misinformation. Public libraries have weathered these challenges in varying degrees of success and I am proud to sit here knowing our library has thrived. I have shared the board table with twenty-three different trustees over the last twenty years. I've not always seen eye to eye with all of them, including some folks here. But um I even lost my cool a few times, but at the end of the day, I did my best to treat each of them with respect and an open mind. When staff first proposed the elimination of late fees, I was not immediately in favor of this idea. But I heard out the reasons from staff and I changed my mind. I aim to approach this role in two ways, as a representative of the community when at this table and as an ambassador out in the community, um you know, for this organization. It probably won't surprise many that uh when I say that I could be an enthusiastically protective of our library. I vividly remember almost throwing my phone into a river the first time I heard that village board members suggested that they should reduce our levy request. And years later, uh weeks of sleepless nights, you know, working with David Settle on the decision to open our buildings back up to the public. Tonight, I will adjourn this version of the board for the last time. To the new board, to the new board that convenes next month, I wish you well. You will have an outstanding executive director to work with as you gather to govern this library that Ellsworth will run. I encourage you to read through the staff survey results and work with Ellsworth to find to share the findings with staff and support the hard work to address the raised concerns. There is really valuable insight in those responses. Uh, thank you to my fellow board members. It has been a privilege working with you. I've spoken with many of you over the last, you know, some of you individually over the last couple of weeks and I will continue to do so in the future. Though through all the long meetings, heated discussions and personal check-ins in between, I I we're no longer just peers, we are friends. We have been there for each other through some very difficult times, both related to this board and personally. To the staff who worked day in and out to ensure that this library remains the respected and loved institution it is in Oak Park, I don't have the words to properly express my gratitude. Lee and Suzie, you have been amazing partners this last year. Your dedication and professionalism have been the rocks that have helped hold this place up. I look forward to what you will accomplish when you have just your regular duties to focus on. As we have concluded our agenda and I uh been grayer and hopefully wiser, declare us adjourned.